Okay, it is 2:35. We have a quorum, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. I do not have a chairman's report. I do not think we have any ad hoc subcommittee reports, do we? Does anybody have a subcommittee report? I don't see any hands. Okay, committee member communications. Does any committee member have anything they wish to say? No? Okay. Next is public comment on agenda items, and this is a special meeting called for one specific agenda item. So I'm going to, the way I'm going to do it today is to go ahead and have Mr. D'Enzo do his presentation. I'm going to take questions for clarification from the committee members and then I'll take public comment. So, Mr. D'Enzo, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Thank you, Director Dean. So, um, so this item before you today, Agenda Number 2A, it's for the discussion and consideration of an agreement of consultant services with Kevin Merck Associates LLC for environmental consultation for the water reclamation facility project. So I'm going to be sharing a presentation with you all today, and I have, and the actual, the presentation slides should be available on the website. But I'm going to go ahead and share mine, my screen. And this will be a joint presentation. I'm going to speak on some items. And then Melissa Bland, our program manager, will also be speaking on some of the other items to relating to this project. I tend to go into detail on Mr. Merck's scope of work and what's required for this project for the permitting of the water reclamation facility. So I intended to be a very, I intended to be informative. I don't intend it to be a rushed situation, and I want to be able to answer as many concerns and questions that everyone has. So, what you should see on your screen right now says Section 7 ESA consultation, what it is and why we need it. Please give me, let me know if that's what you see on your screen. Okay, thank you. So, so before I go on, just, you know, we'll share, we're going to share a little bit of history relating to this project. Because our aim with the permitting of this project, you know, at the very least, since I've, I've joined the district in 2020, is to permit a project that is, number one, technically sound, environmentally responsible, and very importantly, that it needs to be collaborative with our regulatory agencies. Because I, you know, I wanted to establish these relationships with these agencies to be sure that, that everyone is on board with, with the project. Because the intent of the, the WRF, believe it or not, is to, to preserve the environment, to, it's actually, it, it should improve the environment. You know, people think that it's there to harm the environment. Quite frankly, the opposite is true. So, and, and that's, that's, that is and should be the intention of why this project was, was built to provide a water supply, an alternative water supply for, for the district. And, and what's before you now is our, our things that are needed to move forward with the project. It's never been our intention, and I believe this aligns with the board's intent that, you know, we, we aren't here to check boxes, but at the same time, we're here to fulfill all the requirements that are required for this permit. And we're building upon studies that have done, that have been done historically. But at the same time, we're addressing issues that agencies have expressed from those past studies, from, from, you know, not just the studies, not just the subsequent environmental impact report, but other studies relating to it. They have expressed concerns, and we, and we, you know, we're here trying to address all of those. That's why it's somewhat of a slow process. It's a complex environmental setting that we're, that we're doing this project under. But at the same time, we are at the, at, we're knocking at the door to getting this project, getting this, there's this permitting process continued. So with that, you know, I hope to remind the, the public in the, in this committee, you know, the importance of the Section 7 environmental consultation is all about. So first of all, let me share this slide here about the permitting process. So we've, as I've shared, I shared a version of this slide at the board meeting last week, and where we're at currently in this permitting process is we've, we've completed the adaptive management plan update. And what was important about this update was that it also included some modeling that was required for, for moving forward with, with these agency consultations. And it, and it is, you know, yes, the, the main point of it too was to, to, to present to the county information so that it would satisfy the information hold. And that is really what, one of the, the main purposes of this project was. But at the same time, you know, we were also fulfilling project, the, the project description that was mentioned back in the subsequent EIR, and Melissa will, will get into that in more detail. So now that, that the board has approved the adaptive management plan update with the new, with the new modeling data, the next step would be to move forward with the agency consultation process. And this is that Section 7 process that I'm talking about. And Section 7 is, is the engagement of the, the US Army Corps of Engineers, and they will coordinate with the US Fish and Wildlife, and they will also coordinate with NOAA Fisheries. And also, it'll also include permits that's required by both the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And as was, and, and as part of this, is in, in this consultation process, additional data will need to be fed into to support the findings that were discussed in the adaptive management plan update. So groundwater modeling for the lagoon discharge, for example, needs to be looked at more, more carefully. And that's why we also presented that to the board last week, and the Todd groundwater contract was approved. We're, Gus Yates will be doing that groundwater modeling. And there also needs to be a wetland delineation update, too, among other things that I will also discuss. And then, once all of this data is, is completed, it will go for agency review. The agencies involved, the US Army Corps of Fish and Wildlife, NOAA Fisheries, Regional Water Quality Control Board, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, all of them will be reviewing this. And then, once this review is complete, the intent is that we would get a biological opinion. US Fish and Wildlife will issue a biological opinion, which would then satisfy information to the county that we intend would, would provide a really good technical basis that, that'll provide a good technical basis for the information hold. And then with that, the WRF permitting will
Excuse me, but I, could everybody except for Mr. D'Enzo please mute their microphone? We're getting a little background noise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, so with that, there's, there's some other slides here, and now Melissa will explain the timeline that led us up to this point.
Right. I'm sharing an office, so I apologize if you can hear some background noise. This slide covers some of the permitting milestones to date, especially as they relate to the Section 7 consultation process. As you're all probably aware, the CCSD received the emergency permit for the project now known as the Water Reclamation Facility in 2014, and we completed construction in 2015. An application for the regular permit was submitted in 2014 and then revised several times over the years. In 2017, the subsequent environmental impact report was certified by the Board of Directors, and that SEIR included project modifications to the original EWS project, some of which are still included in the project description today. One of the modifications triggered the requirement to obtain a 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, which is the nexus for the 7th section consultation process, and I'll explain that a bit more later. In 2018, we contracted with Cleveland Biological to complete the Section 7 process and provide other permitting assistance. Due to the closure of the project's brine evaporation pond, and the, some, some important changes to the project description were required. In addition to that, the Coastal Commission and the county requested a, an ESHA feasibility study to support our regular permit application. And this feasibility study was additional scope for Cindy Cleveland and was her primary priority in 2018 and early 2019. Following that effort, CCSD staff with guidance from the Board of Directors and in collaboration with the County of San Luis Obispo's Planning Department, we crafted a revised project description to include only the project components currently in the ground. This included Brian's storage tanks for off-hauling and the extended lagoon discharge line. With the final project description submitted, the county issued an information hold to request additional documentation and clarification. And CCSD staff provided two sets of responses in 2021, including an operational noise technical memo and a traffic study. In addition, the CCSD also commenced its in-stream flow study, which includes a task specific to WRF operation. And that brings us to 2022. This year, we've completed updates to the AMP via the 2021 annual report and associated groundwater modeling. At this point, we feel we have enough information to proceed with the Section 7 consultation process, which required watertight project description and additional supporting studies. The agreement with Cleveland Biological expires in June of this year. So this is the primary reason this item is before us today. Okay, so what is a Section 7 exactly? Section 7 charges federal agencies to aid in the conservation of listed species, and more specifically, Section 7 A2 requires the agencies to ensure that their activities are not likely to jeopardize the continued existence of listed species, or destroy, or adversely modify designated critical habitat. The US Fish and Wildlife Service serves as the sort of gatekeeper for creek habitat and listed species, while the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration or NOAA Fisheries has jurisdiction over oceanic species and habitat, including coastal lagoons. So therefore, these two agencies must be consulted regarding the WRF's project potential impacts and mitigation measures. Next slide. And why is this process so important? First, it ensures agency oversight within a specific timeframe. So the Section 7 has mandated response deadlines. The CCSD is guaranteed participation from these agencies and a formal response within 135 days of initiation. And this is critical for us, especially since we require concurrence from these and other resource agencies to support our CDP application. If we submit the AMP annual report and our, you know, redline modifications to the AMP to these agencies, there's no guarantee that they will respond or that, that they will respond at all, but there's certainly no guarantee that they would respond within the timeframe of our extension to respond to the county's information hold. The Section 7 also satisfies mitigation measures Bio 3 and Bio 18 of the 2017 SEIR, which I'll explain a little bit more about on the next slide. And then finally, it's simply the most transparent option to address lingering concerns about the project's impacts on coastal habitat and species. And it will provide the highest level of review possible for this incredibly important project. Next slide. So mitigation measure Bio 3 provided for the extension of the lagoon water discharge to avoid biasing well 16D1 water quality samples, and this was requested by the Regional Water Board, and to more efficiently deliver water to the San Simeon Creek and Lagoon. As our modeling shows us, the lagoon discharge is a valuable environmental enhancement that delivers the surface water directly to critical habitat at a rate of at least 100 gallons per minute. And this prevents or lessens the effects of creek withdrawals and normal dry season water level decline. Moving the lagoon discharge from its current location outside of the riparian corridor directly to the bank of the San Simeon Creek requires additional permit, permitting, which is detailed in Bio 18. These permits include the 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. So as I stated earlier, this is the nexus for the Section 7 consultation process. It requires the Army Corps as the federal agency permitting our projects discharged to federal waters to consult with the US Fish and Wildlife Service and NOAA Fisheries regarding potential impacts to ESHA. This mitigation measure also includes requirements to complete the wetland delineation and habitat mitigation and monitoring plans, which are required to support permitting efforts specifically for the Section 7 consultation.
So now I'm going to talk about the, the specific work, scope of work tasks for, for Kevin Merck and Associates to complete the, all these requirements under the Section 7 consultation. So, and so some of these were already mentioned, and you know, I'm just reiterating it again, you know, in, in relation to the tasks that were outlined in his scope. So task number one is to update, is update delineation of waters of the US and state of California. So the purpose of this is to update the wetland delineation of the study area. And this is basically to, to outline the waters of the state, what jurisdiction belongs to Army Corps of Engineers, what jurisdiction belongs to the regional board, and also for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. This, this, what, this work was, a, a version of this work was done in 2016 as part of the effort for the SEIR. But, but in order to engage with this new, you know, with this new process, it's, it's more than five years out, and every time, and it needs to be updated every five years. So that's essentially why we're, we need to update the delineation of these waters of the US and state of California. So the deliverable for this would be a delineation map and a report that is an update from, from 2016. Also, task two is what's called the Clean Water Act Section 404 nationwide permit application. This would mean a couple of things that are, are required for this, is that, number one, it would need a compensatory habitat mitigation and monitoring plan. And this is a requirement to monitor and to mitigate potential impacts of the project. And, and not only that, but to also design mitigation measures, should there be any mitigation required. So that needs to be, that's, that's a requirement of this, of this process. And also, task under the subheading of task two are the biological assessments. So what the, the purpose of the biological assessment is to analyze actions that may affect the federally listed species. So all of the, the, the background work from the AMP and the modeling was done, but the actual effects on the species, that needs to be evaluated, and it's evaluated through a biological assessment. And two biological assessments are required for this under the same heading. One of them is, one will needs to be submitted to the US Fish and Wildlife. That's because they have jurisdiction, you know, or oversight over the, the California red-legged frog and a tidewater goby. And the NOAA Fisheries are, are biological assessments to be submitted to the NOAA Fisheries for steelhead trout. So those are the two that are required for this task. Task number three is, is the Clean Water Section 401 Water Quality Certification Application. So this is required for projects that result in, that results in fill or physical changes to the waters of the US and state. This particular application is reviewed by the regional board. Hence, this task is, is going to be required for, for that, for, for that review. And then task number four is the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Stream Bed Alteration Agreement. And this is, this is a task that's required because of any alterations, any alterations of creek, of the creek bed, bank, or associated vegetation. We need an agreement with the, with the California Fish and Wildlife, and they have jurisdiction over that, that particular agreement. So that is something that would be required for this project as well. Task number five is, is technical support for the project team. And, and I know that what, you know, people were a little bit confused about the, the construction that, that would take place. Whenever someone mentions construction, you know, we're thinking, you know, big machineries and, and a lot of earth moving. The, the construction involved here is, is intended to be very minimal and with, with a very small environmental footprint. And it's going to be an environmentally feasible. So basically, it's, it's, it's extending the discharge pipe from where it is now to about, you know, about 100 feet closer to the confluence of Van Gordon Creek and San Simeon Creek. And also, there are also part of modeling that we, we would also investigate options to maybe put the, the discharge location maybe upstream, because that might provide a better, a, a better, what do you call it? That, that might be an environment, more environmentally preferable project. So those are, so those are the kind of things that, that Gus Yates would be modeling for this, this particular effort. But, but as far as technical support to the project team, we need this because there's going to be some back and forth between these agencies about what's, what would be feasible and what would, would present a project that would be environmentally preferable. So yes, there will be some, there will be some construction that, that will take place, but it's, it's to extend that discharge line from the location where it is now to, to what, where it is described in the project description, and Melissa already described from the SEIR over to the confluence of Van Gordon Creek and San Simeon Creek. So, so that's a summary of the scope of task works, and I, I know that you all would have more questions about this, but some of them they've been answered, but again, I'm willing to, to answer more questions. Both, both myself and Melissa are available for that.
Okay, I have one question real quick. You brought up Gus Yates, and we're talking about Kevin Merck's contract, but part of the scope of work you're talking about, Gus Yates is going to do as well that last part on the stream bed alteration. Is that Gus Yates tack or task, or is that Kevin Merck's task?
That's Kevin Merck's task.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure, since you mentioned Gus Yates's name.
So, 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 so the, the discharge location will be modeled.
Oh.
So there's, there's different modeling scenarios that we want to, we want to present to the agencies relating to this. Things that would be, that would provide a more environmentally preferable project.
Okay. Okay, so any of the committee members wish to ask a question for clarification? I don't see hands, but I see Michael shaking his head, so you want to unmute Michael? You're muted.
Okay. So, yeah. A few questions, but first, you know, I, I listened to the, you know, last Thursday's discussion with the board and you know, questions from the community, questions from board members and such. And, you know, John, just about, you know, it looked like he just about hit the ceiling when, you know, the, so why on earth did Kevin Merck use the term SWF? And, you know, how did that happen? And for goodness sakes, let's use the, you know, the current terminology of water reclamation facility. And any thoughts on, like, how did, you know, Kevin end up using that two-year-old term? And that's like getting blindsided.
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Mr. Merck used the original contract agreement with Cindy Cleveland to model his scope of work after, and that agreement was from 2018, when the facility was still known as the SWF. And he is familiar with the project and the project history, but not necessarily the, the controversy around the, the naming convention. And we didn't catch it because it's still the SWF and a lot of our permitting documentation, so it's kind of common for us to see that.
Yeah.
But we, we changed it. The new, the wording has been changed for the, the contract.
Right. I, I have several, I just, you know, kind of roll through. Would it be worth making explicit in this that these are the actions and studies needed to provide the information for the regular CDP?
Ray.
Yes.
Okay.
That doesn't really come out. It's not stated. And a lot of, some of the questions from the board meeting were around, all right, one more study. For goodness sakes, is, is this going to do it for us?
It kind of looks like that's some of the last things on the list. Is that correct, Ray?
Yes. The, as far as like studies go, I, I understand that I, I think, I think this is different from studies in the past. Well, I, I'm not going to, I shouldn't say that, because a, a lot of those studies were, were required to, actually, all of them were required. But this one, it's more for gathering needed information to be, to be submitted to the agencies in this new step in the process. So by the way, like, a, a question was asked about the biological assessments, okay? And so no one's asked that yet, but I'll ask it. So why wasn't that done? Okay, why is it being done now? Yes, it's required. Why wasn't it done then? So the answer to that is, there were iterations of the project description, as Melissa pointed out, in, even in that, that timeline, where, where different iterations of the project description were required, what were, actually were needed, because the, some of the conditions of the project changed, like the, the, the pond, for example, that there was a cease and desist on that. So that, that portion of the project changed. So, so in order to move forward with the, the biological assessment, those project description issues needed to be ironed out, and, and it really wasn't until the latter part of 2020, when we submitted the, the current permit application, updated permit application. permit application, updated permit application, where that was was finalized. And and moving through the process, there were, there were questions from the agencies, that there were questions from the agencies that were already mentioned in, that were mentioned as comments to the subsequent EIR that really weren't addressed in this new iteration of the project description. So hence, you know, we did the versions of the in-stream flow study to move forward with getting that information. Hence, there was that modeling that that Gus Yates did with within the Perk Pond and establishing a profile to the, from the pumping site all the way to the creek, so that we can address in real time, for example, when, when there would be some harm, but but be able to to, you know, be able to find out without the harm. Because, you know, instead of saying, oh, there's harm to the environment, I guess there was harm by the project, but but now we have, we have an opportunity to actually show that with with the with the piezometers that were installed there at the Perk Ponds. So that's an example of things that we needed to address with with concerns for the agencies. And and in order to make a worthwhile, meaningful biological assessment, we needed to do all of those things. So so I believe that, you know, this would be at least the last portion of the project that we would, that we would, but that would be required moving forward to at least move the, the, the the permitting process forward. I don't, I'm not, I mean, I, I don't have control of the environment, so I, it's really difficult for me to guarantee that, but but from my point of view, I believe that this puts us in solid footing.
These are, will provide the information that we're aware of that is required.
Right.
Another issue that we seems we should have a really good answer for. I've listened to multiple, I don't know, comments, verbal attacks, call them what you will, claiming that CCSD has dragged its feet. It's taken so long. Why is this taking so long? It's my impression that gathering all the information needed over the years has been a lot of work. And for example, the installation of the piezometers had to occur in order to gather additional data, et cetera. And it seems like it would be good to have an answer. I mean, the timeline is really good, but it shows what happened, but some sort of narrative describing what additional information had to be gathered, when, at what points in time staff learned about additional information needs? The kind of resource constraints that you had, the way it took, you know, took the amount of time it did. You know, it seemed like that would be a, not just offensive, but a good explanation. Because it, you know, it does seem to me that folks have been diligently working on this. But I've heard the verbal attacks about the feet dragging, and I haven't heard the response that, you know, clearly refutes that. Or perhaps says, here are cases where, in the look back, we could have done things better, but you make the decisions you make at the time you make those decisions with the information that's available. And that's the best we can ask anybody to ever do. So thoughts on that?
So you're basically asking for an expansion of information within this timeline they presented, for example, why and how did you find out when you needed this kind of thing?
And it's not so much that I'm asking for that. I have the general impression that as I said, CCSD staff have been diligent on this for years, but the ability to answer that question when folks ask the question in a less positive frame than I'm asking it in.
Mr. D'Enzo, do you?
I'll, I'll answer it like this. So in defense of of our efforts and and the staff, you know, our staff, Melissa and others that have diligently worked on this in the past two years, I believe that it's, it's pretty quick based on what's happened even in prior years. So so for example, Coastal Commission has asked for in-stream flow study for a while. There's a reason why it wasn't given back 20 years ago. Okay, I'm not going to go over why, why those were why it wasn't done back then, but it was something that we, in our efforts in the past couple of years, we did. And and not only that, we we did very significant modeling efforts as a result of the in-stream flow study. And and like I said, the the best way that I could, I could say it is that the other thing too, that in defense of why a lot of these take too long. So remember that sometimes the data that we required is seasonal. You know, if we miss certain windows of the season, like if we miss a dry spell and then it starts raining, like we want to get out there and make and make measurements. And then it decides to rain, or, you know, there's a dry season, or we're waiting for these conditions to happen. It's a, you know, in a controlled environment, that would be, that would be easy, but not in not in a complex coastal environment such as this. So so in combination of those two things and you know, in 2017, what happened there was the that the ponds, the issues with the ponds took place. Or with the the storage pond, I should say, took place. And then so there needed to be a process, staff needed to develop, to devote time to to get a, to get a cease and desist on that. So.
Frank, can I add to your discussion? I would just also say that this project is your proverbial cart before the horse. So most of this permitting activity would have been done in a, in a very different setting if the project had been normal and had not been constructed prior to permits being sought. We're dealing with a different standard of review because the project exists and there are certain questions that are being raised because of components and operational issues of the facility that wouldn't have been known during a normal permitting process, and it would have been something handled in the monitoring reporting phase after permits had already been obtained and the project had been constructed and operated. So it's a particularly difficult project to permit because it's after the fact.
You know, and I think a lot of time would have been spent trying to do all of these things before actually getting the permit to build this. If we had not been in an emergency situation, we may still not have gotten the permit by now, thinking back on it. We also need to remember that the people that we have here now are not the people that were here when this project was built. And I have seen, you know, Mr. D'Enzo and Ms. Bland and Ms. Guernsey. I don't know if I pronounce her name right. Work really hard on getting all of these studies and reports done and pushing what's needed for the CDP. If you're, if you're done, Michael. Did you have another question or can I call on Jim?
Oh, call on Jim, but come back to me. Yeah.
Okay, Jim.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One was I don't know if you can answer this. Was Ms. Cleveland offered an opportunity to stay on?
She was.
Yeah, she was.
Okay, and I want to ask about oh, God, I got so many questions about it. The you know, I guess, I guess the biggest problem I have is I don't see California Fish and Wildlife mentioned as an agency with a stake in everything that happens here. I see, I understand Nymphs is responsible for Steelhead, and I understand that you're looking at Fish and Wildlife, but, you know, you're right. Chicken jowl to a park, California State Park, and have tried various schemes to discharge waste out into the waters in front of there, which is also a park. And and yet there's no consultation that I'm seeing in the presentation you just provided with California Fish and Wildlife. Did I miss it?
Yeah, I'll share this, I'll share my screen again. And so under task four, the stream bed alteration permit is a direct nexus with with, or a a coordination with California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
So you're trying to tell us that the main concern that California Fish and Wildlife would have is about you extending a pipe several feet toward the creek to provide mitigation water? And that doesn't seem reasonable.
CDFW is also informally involved in the section seven. The, it's a federal process, so it's the US Fish and Wildlife as the lead, but they typically have just a, you know, it's like a courtesy. They include staff from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. All of the informal consultation calls we've been on so far have had both agencies.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. The other thing that strikes me is, as, you know, I guess we're supposed to look at proposals and projects and opine about their whether they seem feasible or not feasible, et cetera. And the suggestion that we pay somebody to go back and relook at all the borders between state parks, county parks, federal lands, and so on, I think is just a waste of time and money. All that information I think is knowable in public sources and you can correct me if you know of something, but as far as I can tell, nothing's changed. You know, there's been no giant change in that area that I, that would make me suspect that maybe some of these jurisdictions have been altered over time. So my opinion about that is just, I think it's a waste of money, and I wouldn't do it. I think I'll, I think I'll just hold my comments there. Thank you.
So is this delineation update a requirement of this process to verify that you're looking at the right areas?
It is a requirement, yes. There are emerging wetlands and things like that that can change, and that's, that's why they have a five-year threshold on this.
Okay. Okay, so this is something that has to be done every five years. Okay, got it. Okay, before I go back to Michael, let me see if anybody else on the committee wants a chance to ask a question. David, did you have a question?
Yes. But I thought you were going to go to public comment first before we asked all our questions.
Okay, you probably shouldn't. Okay, a question for clarification, not discussion.
Yeah. I, I don't have anything for clarification, but I do have some for overall discussion.
Okay, let me go ahead and see if I can figure out how to do this. Allowing an attendee to speak. See, okay. Crosby Schwartz, okay. Crosby, you want to go ahead and unmute?
Yes, thank you, Director Dean. I have a specific question about the, one of the task descriptions and then a general comment. In the, in the task 2.1 description, Compensatory Habitat Mitigation and Monitoring Plan makes a statement, says, "We will work with the project team to design the mitigation areas onsite, but additional area may be required at an offsite location." But do you have any idea what they're talking about there? And then my, my overall comment is that Ray mentioned at the beginning that the intent to avoid harm to the environment. Having this facility there doesn't inherently harm the environment. It really depends on how much water you pump out of the aquifer into the, into the facility. If you pump a smaller amount, should be no problem. If you pump too much, then that starts to create environmental problems and eventually, of course, draws saltwater into the aquifer, which is a big problem. So, but, you know, the biologist can't determine how much the CCSD is going to pump out of the aquifer. Only the CCSD can determine that. I haven't heard any really rational discussion about, you know, how many hours a week or what pumping rates and everything the CCSD is planning to use this. The project description is pretty vague about this. It talks about, well, maybe we'll just operate it eight hours a day, five days a week, or, you know, only for two months out of the year and so forth. But then it says, well, if we need to, we'll operate it for more. Well, yeah, at some point, you start to do harm to the environment or draw saltwater into the aquifer. So it seems like the CCSD has to provide some information, not only to this consultant, but to Todd Groundwater about how, how much water they're really going to extract out of the aquifer, because that's key. That's the, that's the key thing here. And you, you have to make that decision on your own, depending on how reliable, how far into the dry season you want to be able to operate your wells and so forth. Anyway, that, I just don't see any discussion of that critical, critical factor in any of these discussions, either at the board or the standing committee level. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take all of the public comment first before I ask for responses to those. Second, here me. Figure out how to do this. Okay. Ms. Dickinson, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Director Dean. Well, this sort of came as a real shock to me that after, even with Mr. D'Enzo having been here now three years, I believe, right? That we are now faced with these very new items that apparently have to be addressed and more money spent on. I mean, I'm really, really not understanding it. I'm not understanding why the ACE is involved. I'm not understanding why in the report in the staff packet that Mr. Merk, it's highlighted, he is familiar with NEPA and SEQA. My, my thoughts are going ACE, NEPA, what exactly are you thinking? What's behind this? Who directed you, Mr. D'Enzo, to go this way? What is it that, I mean, you're talking about something on five years. It was 2016, now we're 2022. Why didn't we know about this when you were promising us that the application that's been on hold with county was going to be done by the end of 2020? Oh, then the end of 2021? Now we're looking maybe at the end of 2022. So that's, that's one, I'm just wondering, why now? Why now are we hearing about this? Also, I would like to ask, what are the plans for brine waste disposal? I haven't heard anything. I would also say, why is the tech group for the in-stream flow study, task one, is not being addressed? Why is that not coming before us, before spending more money on another biologist? We need to find out the results of the task one in-stream flow study. You haven't even mentioned Stillwater Sciences in your last couple of meetings. We're paying them, I assume. Are they still conducting the study? I think that you, that this item should not be referred or recommended to the board on Thursday. I think more time needs to be taken. Yes, you have Ms. Cleveland apparently went through June. But, okay, this is rushed. More questions need to be asked. I know that President Howell said he was not really well informed. Director Gray had issues. So here we have an RNI committee meeting that wasn't even planned last week. And then suddenly a special meeting where you want to address all of these rather complex issues. And so the board directors can't speak to you today to ask you questions about it. They're going to get your recommendation or not for tomorrow's meeting. We need more time, folks. Please take your time. Do not rush into something that has already taken eight years. There is no need for it. And I would again urge, on the other, another thing is, why is coastal not listed? Or state parks under agency, under the first chart Mr. D'Enzo showed? I see a lot of influence from the regional board, from US Fish and Wildlife. I'm concerned about regional board having so much influence in this presentation today and what their requirements are now, when we've never even heard of them before. I have a lot more, but you know, this is just this short meeting today and then tomorrow is the board meeting. But I think you'd be making a huge mistake if you go ahead and make a recommendation for the board to go ahead with this on Thursday. I think it needs to be tabled. Thank you very much.
Okay. And this isn't on the board agenda for tomorrow, by the way. Let me see, I know I have one more. I have two more. Okay. Ms. Heinrichs.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think that you need to spend some more time analyzing this. I think you need to get the results of Stillwater Sciences. I, Mr. D'Enzo said that you had results of the Instream Flow Study. I'm not aware of this, but I would like to know about that as before this goes forward. I think you need to spend some time with Ms. Cleveland's study, especially since she is under contract to the end of June. I spent some time with her report this past weekend and it's very, I was, I had a lot of questions. In her 2018 contract lists the Clean Water Act Section 404 and 401 permits. Apparently she did not pursue those, although it also included $11,875 for her to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers over them. Will this amount be not paid to her or will she be asked to refund this if she didn't do this part of the work? Was there, you know, I just think that this, I don't know if there's other parts of the contract that simply weren't done. I'd also like to talk about the content. We've talked about, it sounds like we're just checking a box here. Oh, biological survey done. As I went through that, I discovered that what she found was it basically nothing. That basically what she found out there was two steelhead, one of which was dead and zero tidewater gobies. And the red-legged frogs had declined from over 10,000 in the early 90s to, you know, like 30. I mean, it was just, it's just a pathetic report. And I, I really think that the wildlife agencies are going to take a look at that and be very alarmed because it's not just a matter of having a report. It's a matter of having an understanding of these species. They are endangered, in this case, virtually extirpated in this location by the habitat degradation that's already taken place. And I think that that's an indictment of Cambria's stewardship and a call to action rather than a decision that says, well, since they're already, since we've already ruined it, the, this plant can't make it any worse, so we're okay with going ahead and doing whatever we want. I, I think that that might be comforting to those who want to go ahead with the plant, but I don't think it's something that's going to sell well to the wildlife agencies. I, I think that they would be more inclined, as I certainly would be, to say, this is a time for habitat restoration. This is a time to, to really take seriously our responsibility for, for Santa Rosa Creek is, is the county's main anadromous fish stream. We can't just write it off as, as having as well as over now. I, I mean, I, I was very alarmed by it and, and I think that we should all take it very seriously. The report was not very clearly written. I had spent quite a bit of time sorting through to find it. She, you know, she's kind of got the steelwater mixed in under the tidewater gobie, gobie subheading. But it's in there. I'll be happy to send anyone the, the numbers that I have extracted from that. But it, as you read it carefully, it's a very alarming report. And I think that, that we need to spend much more time with that before going ahead and and contracting with someone else for yet another. And, and then again, of course, to deal with the, the problem of the endless studies and the endless reports just to, to support this CDP, which I, as Mr. Thomas says, I, I am not satisfied that this will be the end of it either. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Bentonhausen.
Thank you very much, Director Dean. I'm happy to be here. I am a half hour late because today I started spending my Wednesdays again volunteering at the Cambria Grammar School. And I want to tell you just a bit about that because it provides part of the context for my remarks. Yesterday I went down to the Santa Rosa Creek Beach to photograph to check whether there are sea stars there on the intertidal rocks to the south. There are indeed some sea stars there and I took pictures of them. I think I counted all about eight that I, without any boots or anything to walk into the water. I brought those pictures to the first graders today at, at Cambria Grammar School. And I brought also the dead sea stars, the dried ones that I had picked up over the years so that they could look at an actual, even though dead sea star. I want to tell you that some of the discussion raised by the first graders had to do with whether we could restore the sunflower sea star with DNA research. This is six-year-old kids. They wanted to know about how much the water flow was coming in with the surf on the sea stars at the rocks that I showed the pictures of. What kind of fresh water pressure did it put on the sea stars? And we're talking now about five and six-year-old children. I bring this up partly to apologize because I ride the school bus and I got here as soon as I could. I bring this up partly to assure you that in many ways, the young people on this planet are more astutely attentive to the urgency of solutions than I am or any of you are. I'm not lumping us into a homogeneous pile, friends. I am saying that I was so reassured that volunteers were left in, let in again today, including me. I was so reassured by that, by meeting the young people that if they could read a little more advanced than first grade, they would, I hope and suspect, come to some of the same conclusions I did when I read for the board agenda last week. In other words, two of the people on the screen, Mr. D'Enzo and Ms. Bland, are overworked. I'm not saying where they're, where they're overworked from. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying the material presented to the board is premature, inadequate, insufficient, and incomplete. And then you're asking them to make a decision. I want to underline what Mr. Schwartz just said. The, one of the key issues is, how much water are you going to pump? And when? And how do you set up your algorithms and your scenarios and your modeling to address specifically that question? So that it actually covers reality and not mathematical speculation. I want to underline what Ms. Heinrichs just said. There is nothing more important here than saying, oh dear. I guess we Cambrians have for, oh, I was going to say a word. I apologize, I didn't say it, but you can put it in yourself. We have messed up San Simeon Creek and we haven't done too well with Santa Rosa Creek either. And now we're looking to do what? I assume that you're still talking about the project description that you referred to back in 2018, whatever that date was. 4,650 houses. How are we going to put that together with what we have already done to the environment? You can tell I talk way too easily at times and too much. I am trying to bring to your attention, but I have been repeating again and again and again. Given the crisis we have created in this climate, we have to get as specific as possible about how we are engaging the environment. And that includes with the economy and energy. And that means with the economy and energy and water and sewer. And friends, I won't live on this planet probably another 10 years. But I can assure you that at the rate we're going, the condition when I die, say, in the age of, ripe old age of 90 or whatever, the condition of the planet when I die will be worse than it is today, given the vagueness of the analysis and the actions that follow from the CCSD. Thank you.
Karen, I think you're muted.
Sorry. Does Mr. D'Enzo or Ms. Bland wish to address any of the comments that were made?
Let's see. So the best I can say relating to this question about how much, how much water can we pump? Well, this is one of the, the things that was addressed in our app where we have triggers that we proposed in the app that would, if there were any groundwater level changes, if there were any, basically that's, that's what we would function. There's, there's other, but the bare bones of it is the groundwater levels and and true, the, the plant hasn't run in five years. More than five years, actually, like six years, that we, until, until we actually get more data that we can, that we can help calibrate. Yes, it is hard to, to determine that. And that's why we have these triggers that we're proposing. And that's why these triggers need to be now brought before, these assumptions need to be brought before the, these other agencies that, that's going to going to determine whether there is harm to the endangered species there. And as far as Cindy Cleveland's report, I, I, her report was a great report and and, and keep in mind that her report was a baseline. You know, there, there wasn't, she wasn't politicizing. There was no, oh, man, you know, I, I need to find more live fish. Or no, it was, it was a baseline. So she, she observed what she observed and she, she, she reported the results in the app. We, we got two good years of data to establish a baseline. Could we have used more? Sure, we could have, but, but that's what, that's what we have as far as that report's concerned. And and the, the, the question about the, the work from Stillwater. Yes, that, that work, that work is important, but the work that was done, so remember, we, we broke up Instream Flow Study into Task One and Task Two, where Task Two was going to be more germane to the project and its project operations. So, yeah, it would be cool if we had, we had all the data from, from the Instream Flow Study from Task One, but we believe that we have the data available to us for this project to move this permit forward. And I, you know, tabling this right now would run the risk of prolonging this project even more. I, I believe we have the data that we can submit to the agencies, you know, to, I mean, we, we have the, the, the baseline data that we can submit to the agencies through which they could have a good standard of review. And that's what these biological assessments are going to provide to the, to this project moving forward. Melissa, do you have any other comments about the questions that were asked?
Sure. In response to Mr. Schwartz, the offsite mitigations, if any, will be determined in consultation with the agencies. It's a standard industry practice for processes such as this where the agencies may require additional mitigations beyond what the CCSD has proposed. For Ms. Heinrichs, we have not paid Cindy Cleveland for work that she has not performed, but she was paid for work that was outside of the scope. She spent a significant amount of time working on the ESHA feasibility study. And I believe there's about $45,000 of unspent funds from her original agreement. And lastly, I would just remind everybody that this, the scope of work that's under discussion today was previously vetted and approved when the agreement for Cindy Cleveland was authorized in 2018. So this isn't new. If, if you weren't aware of the agreement and the scope at that time, it was a staff oversight not to, you know, occasionally check in on the progress being made. There was a lot of conversation about what was happening. It just wasn't really clear that it was happening under that agreement. So I think there's some confusion that's suggesting that this is out of the blue. What is out of the blue is the need to find a new consultant, but the work has always been known to be required. And we have a chance to actually complete it in a timeline that is favorable to the project and keeps us on track to having all of our application materials completed by the end of this year. Frankly speaking, you cannot get a CDP without the Section Seven consultation. When this gets to coastal, not having this information would doom the, the project.
Okay. Okay, so my understanding then is that this SS7 was part of Cindy Cleveland's original contract that was approved in 2018. She just has not gotten that far yet because of other obstacles that took longer than expected. Is that correct? Okay, okay.
Mainly the project description issues.
Okay, and the Task One Instream Flow Study is underway, if I'm correct. And, but it is not needed to be completed before the CDP moves forward. Is that correct?
It's not, well, that project is not directly related to the project operations is what I'm saying, and what I'm trying to say, so.
So it's not needed for the permit itself, but it may be needed later for the Coastal Commission?
It may be needed later for, you know, more monitoring, monitoring issues that, that could be conditions of the permit moving forward. But, but as far as moving the permit and stand to get it approved, we have, we have the information at our fingertips to be able to now submit all of that, you know. And, you know, with, with the analysis from, from Kevin Wirth moving forward, that was, thank you, Melissa, for reminding everyone of that, that it was in 2018 that, that Cindy's work was defined at that point. She didn't have the information, you know, then either, so that's why it didn't move forward. So, but now we do, so.
Okay. Jim has his hand up and then I think David still wants to speak at some point here. Jim, you're muted.
Well, a lot happened in the last couple of years, including the water main breaking and blowing out in a wetland area that the state controls. And what concerns me is that we're looking at this project and we're moving ahead. And what concerns me is that we're looking at this project and we're moving ahead and we're going to expend more money and hire more consultants when, when the whole community is relying on a plastic pipe laying on top of a wetland down at down at San Simeon State Park. And it just, it just seems bizarre to me that we're concerned about this or we're concerned about that. Where in this process are you going to replace that pipe? And bury it in the right away, just like AT&T did. AT&T, while we sat and talked about it, ran fiber optic all the way up to San Simeon. That wasn't an emergency or anything. I mean, you know, it was a volitional thing that they chose and, and looks like Caltrans was amenable to it. Well, you've got a big vault up there at Dow and you've got a big vault down at the, at the restrooms or near the restrooms at, at Washburn. So why not? Why shouldn't the project that we're looking at, talking about, talking about funding and eager to get done, getting that plastic pipe below ground and away from where it could be damaged? It just seems to me to be an odd choice of priorities.
I, I've not, I've not forgotten about that pipe and, and, and thank you for reminding everyone how, how that, that I have a lot of work scopes, work products to work on. But yes, I, we're, we're actually hoping that we get a grant to help with that project too. So we, we, the, the board approved us to move forward with applying for the grant to help with that project. But no, I have not forgotten about that. Believe me, it's, there's, that's one of the things that, and among other things that keeps me up at night, but, but you know, I, me doing this and me doing that and the other things that I do for the district, no, I, I have not forgotten those, believe me.
Well, and the pipe's going to be a couple of million dollars anyway, and you've got to go through all of the environmental and permitting studies to do that. And yes, we did approve applying for a grant from, is that the American Rescue Plan? I can't remember what it's called, but we did approve applying for the grant for that as one of the projects, list of projects. Okay, David, you wanted to speak before? Did you, are you ready to speak?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you. A couple of questions and, and a lot of my questions are going to be about the proposal that Mr. Merk made and, and about about choosing Mr. Merk, I guess. First of all, on, on, on some of the stuff that was brought up before, do we expect any change to the delineation of waters? At all? I, I'm guessing we're just going to do that update, but it shouldn't be a big deal, right?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and answer the, the question as, as it comes. So true, if, if it's, you know, if the, if it turns out that there was, there wasn't a lot of change, then you know, not a lot of hours would be used in, in that particulars task.
Okay, good. I guess, you know, overall I support the work that's going to be done because it was always needed to be done. I, I think that the, the, the section seven was always going to have to happen regardless of what we're doing. And now we're going to get, be getting it done. And if we get it done by September, I'll be happily surprised. How much water can we pump? Well, that's why we're doing the in-stream flow study. That's why we're doing all the modeling. That's why we're going to use that information that we're gathering to go ahead and set the triggers that we need to, to make sure that we're not going to over pump. And I think that's the answer. Ray, unless you want to correct me to what, to what Mr. Schwartz was asking, I think, I think we don't know because we don't run the thing until we do, we have to use modeling, we have to use the information that we're gathering now from all these experts and we're going to then set up triggers that will allow us to properly turn off the machine if we have to or whatever. I, I think this is the right thing to do and we need this information and we need to move forward. Second, let's talk a little bit about Mr. Merk's proposal. On page seventy-two of last week's thing and on page two of four of his proposal, he talks about finalizing the project description that he will provide with the project team to provide technical design assistance to finalize the project description. I thought we had finalized the project description. There's is there something new that we need to do other than maybe moving that one discharge line?
I'll, I'll answer the question, but Melissa, if you can also provide background. The project description that was submitted is, is done. There, though it's true that there are like, there are conditions of the project that could change under certain contexts, like, you know, any updates to the AMP, any of the adaptive management that, that we do, there are certain, there are certain things about the project that could change and so that's, that, that's really the context of what, what, what he meant by that. It wasn't like the project description that we submitted under the, the permit as it currently stands.
Okay, okay. Very good. That, that helps me. My, my, my biggest question is we're, we're signing up Mr. Merk for, for eighty-five thousand dollar contract with, with no formal RFP process, no bids, no. Did we look at anybody else? Does Stillwater do this kind of work? How did we choose Mr. Merk?
So we did. So Tim Carmel did reiterate to us that we were, we, we, what we did was legal as far as, you know, the, the contracting portion is concerned. Under this context, the, due to the timeliness of the project, that, that was, that, that became an issue and and, and Kevin Merk did work with Cindy in the past. Originally, we talked about just having him sub under Cindy. That, that was, that was a possibility for this project. We went with a separate agreement with Mr. Merk because Cindy wanted to, to take time to do other projects in her life. So she wasn't going to be involved anymore with, with this particular portion of the project. But as far as the legal stance, we, we are within our legal right to offer the contract to, to Kevin work without going out for an RFP. But the, the main thing too was the timeliness of the project. We, we didn't have time to do that.
Sure. I, I understand. I understand. So what you're saying is that he's really been working as a subcontractor unofficially to Miss Cleveland. And that's how you were able to say, okay, now we've got a guy who's intimately involved with the project for the last year and we can just swing him in and, and get him involved to the rest of the, rest of the work that needs to be done. Is that right?
Well, Kevin has worked, Kevin work has worked with Cindy in the past. But he has not been a sub for this particulars project yet. We talked about him being a sub for the, this project, but yeah, but you know, decided that we, we needed to make a, a clean break, so to speak, because, because Miss Cleveland didn't want to be, things in her life changed. She didn't want to be involved with this project at this time. So.
Right, right. That makes perfect sense not to have her in the path or whatever anymore. If she wants out, let's, let's, let's go with her wishes. Stillwater doesn't do this kind of work? Or was nobody else reasonably nearby that, that wanted to do this work?
Well, we, we didn't do an RFP because of the, the timeliness of the, of the project and the, and Cindy Cleveland did have a professional working relationship with Mr. Merk in the past. And Mr. Merk is very familiar with the inner workings of Cambria relating to environmental issues. So yes, we, we made that decision to not go for an RFP. But but like, like, like I said before, Tim Carmel assured us that we, we were legally within our bounds to do this.
Yeah. Well, and I understand legal aspects. I just, I just have a hard time just picking a person, you know, based on, on that and not at least interviewing a few other people and that kind of thing. I understand he's done work on Santa Rosa Creek before, but I guess that was a number of years ago.
Yes, it's been a number of years.
He's also worked under a different agency for Cambria on the, then East West Ranch project.
Right, right. I saw that in his thing also. Okay. Now, I, I don't, I don't have any other questions. I think his time and material rates are, are good. I, you know, I just wish that we could get some of these people to to say that they're going to complete all of the work that they propose for the set price and not say that, oh, if I run over, I'll do it all on time and material after that. I realize that that's not the way things have happened these days anymore, but I wish we could go back to the days when people bid a job and actually completed the job for what they said they were going to do. So thank you.
Okay. Michael and then Stephen.
Thank you, Karen. I'm, I'm muted. Wow, a lot of good discussion. I want to start off by saying it's from all of my reading, research, field, field visits. It's my impression and understanding that the water reclaimation facility, although extremely unpopular in Cambria is a functional facility which we own. It's in the ground. We're not trying to decide whether to build it. We own it. It's operable and it, from everything I understand, that advanced water treatment plant is capable of, of cycling the water and delivering potentially up to two hundred fifty acre feet per year of water into the reservoir. Now, whether that water will result in the predicted amount of, of potable water into the San Simeon wells is an uncertainty. Well, of course it's an uncertainty because the emergency CDP allows us to operate under an emergency. We haven't been able to operate it in the last, what, six years? It needs to have a regular permit and the work proposed is clearly necessary to attain the regular coastal development permit. So I'm now in terms of that sort of work needed to move all of the studies towards the permitting process. I've been involved for decades with lots of large capital projects and if I were a member of, of the CCSD staff, I wouldn't want to be have someone say, all right, we're not going to hire the consultant. We're going to ask Melissa, we're going to ask you or Ray, we're going to ask you to take the lead and run all the paperwork. I couldn't do it. Every project I've been involved in, we would hire consultants of this nature that have that expertise. So I am in favor of contracting this scope of work. As Dave said, the rates and bottom line prices seem reasonable. I'm not concerned about the fact that the specific scopes are priced and that the statement work outside of these scopes will be additional time and materials. I think that's normal practice that we don't want to cause people to go out of business. And this is the kind of project where surprises can happen and by agreement with between staff and this contractor, there may be additional work that needs to be done and Ray, Melissa, the CCSD staff needs that license to be able to say, yes, here's a surprise, go after this additional work. So I, I support that. In terms of selecting this contractor, from what I've read on the, the resume seems well qualified and there are some scopes that I never want to go for the lowest bidder. We don't always buy the cheapest toilet paper. There's a reason for that. And this is work that requires high level expertise. I'm, I'm pleased that Cindy Crawford has a relationship with, with Mr. Merk and so it's just a natural choice, in my opinion. So I'm, I'm in favor. The a number of claims were made about directors being confused and having misgivings about this project at last week's meeting. What I heard at the meeting was that Director Gray was asking, can you tell us that the work that Mr. Merk is going to do is the work that needs to be done to get us the CDP? And you've answered that clearly. Yes. So to me, you've clearly answered the, the answer of the Director Gray, the question Director Gray had asked. Director Howell looked at the construction and thinking, what on earth are we constructing? And you've, you've made that very clear that it's, it's the rerouting of that flow line for the to the upstream. So those seem to be the points of contention. Also, some public comment earlier inferring causality, the claims that whatever has been found in the recent studies in terms of the wildlife currently existing in the, in the creek basin, an inference that that must, there must be causality that the operation of the WRF must have caused that. And that can't possibly be true. We haven't run it for six years. Whatever wildlife that was discovered, you know, this forms a baseline. So I think the claims that were made earlier about the WRF degrading the environment, I I, I see no causality because it has not been running. So, yeah, I think that kind of includes my remarks. I, I support moving ahead and this is the facility that we own. We we need the flexibility to run it when CCSD decides we need to run it and not limit ourselves to the emergency CDP.
Okay. And I think Kevin Merk would have loved working with Cindy Crawford, but it was actually Cindy Cleveland.
Cleveland, right. Dave, old friend, Dave Crawford's wife, right?
Stephen, you had some questions.
Yes. How much of this was completed by the group that's not going to finish the project? I mean, this was all originally come up with and, and how much of this is, is he completing? Is it fifty percent, seventy-five, twenty-five?
Ray? You're muted.
So.
So the the process was started. There was some informal consultation already with with the agencies. And this is how we got some indications of what the the concerns were. Uh, and then, as Melissa pointed out too, that that there were some other work that that Cindy ended up doing relating to the the ESHA study and also with the the AMP. So it's difficult to tell, like, you know, what percentage. I I I would say that because Cindy didn't have all the information at her fingertips to 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 bring it all the way through, I would say about seventy-five percent really of the the project needs to move forward and just have it cross the finish line.
Okay, one other thing is it's obvious to me that this needs to be done, and and there shouldn't be really any delay. We've had this plant for, like you said, six years, and it's been sitting there doing nothing. I think this helps they get a purposeful project.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you, David.
Yes, I would move that the Resources and Infrastructure Committee recommend the approval of the contract with Kevin Merk to the full board at their next meeting.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Michael, we haven't heard from Brad at all during this meeting, and I believe he's phoning in. So we can't see a hand if he were raising his hand. Let me give him, take a minute and see if he wants to speak.
Um, no, I'm good. But I did want to, I did want to have him restate that.
Yes, would you restate your motion, David? Brad is the secretary and he's taking minutes.
Sure. So I move that the Resources and Infrastructure Committee recommend approval of the contract with Kevin Merk at the next board meeting.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have one member of the public that wishes to speak. I'm gonna, oh, excuse me, Ms. Duffield.
So can we please amend the motion because the next board meeting is tomorrow?
Oh, I'm sorry, it it is.
Maybe the next of the next available board meeting, or maybe the first meeting in May or something, but we won't be able to publish it and get it on there for tomorrow.
It is on the agenda for May twelfth.
Oh, it is. Okay, perfect.
So.
Okay, then I would amend my motion to say the May twelfth board meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Michael, do you second that amendment? You're.
You're muted.
Yeah, okay, I just searching for the button. I recall hearing the directors stating that they might see themselves calling a special meeting so that this doesn't have to wait three or four weeks. So I wouldn't state the May twelfth meeting. I would put it something as Pamela was indicating the.
Yeah, as as scheduled on the board agenda. How's that?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible is fine.
That work, Ms. Duffield, does that work? Okay, thank you.
That works. I just didn't wanted to have the record say the next meeting because that's tomorrow.
I know. I know. Not not all of my committee members may have known that.
Yeah, we have actually two tomorrow.
You, you. Okay.
I also wanted to say too that it's not gonna affect the motion, but but all of the materials, we we changed the name from SWF to WRF, so.
Okay, I think you mentioned that you already had done that.
We have it, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you want to amend your motion again, David?
Uh, I move that the Resources and Infrastructure Committee recommend approval of the Kevin Merk's Merk contract at the next available board meeting. Next possible board meeting.
Okay, I think that works. Okay, are are you going to second that amendment, Michael? Okay.
Second that amendment.
Ms. Duffield, if a member of the public wishes to speak, I need to do this before the vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and bring Ms. Dickinson in.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Dean. Yeah, first of all, I didn't get an answer to the question that I had about the brine waste discharge. What what has actually been finalized within the project as to how the brine waste gets disposed with the project, their facility? And 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 secondly, has the two hundred and fifty acre feet that the original project was was going to be able to supply the district with, has that, is that the same amount of acre footage? Or because so many things have changed and are continuing to change, I'm also, I have that question for Mr. Daniel. Thank you.
Okay, that's not really related to this study, but go ahead and and like to.
The project, the the Brian waste disposal has not changed. The the project description talks about trucking the waste, the bright waste. So and oh, oh, yeah, the other question about, yeah, two hundred fifty acre feet was is what's talked about in the Brian, I mean, is the the proposed maximum for the the WRF. But it doesn't mean that that's what we're gonna be doing. It just it just mean that's that's the that's proposed maximum and but it's it's always gonna be conditioned, you know, that that's the that's the project description, how the how the county and eventually the 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 coastal is going to condition it, you know, based on the AMP, based on the biological opinion. All of these will will come into play, you know, based on the triggers that we proposed that that are agreed upon by the different agencies. Uh, that's what's gonna, that that would that would also come into play. But but yes, that but as far as the the proposed maximum, that hasn't changed with with the project description.
Right, you just have to give a maximum number in the project description, even though that may not be what you end up using, correct?
Correct, yeah. And and again, it depends on the triggers, depends on the the mitigations that and and it depends on the conditions of the permit, so.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. I'm gonna do a roll call vote and please when I call your name verbally respond to the vote because when this recording comes out on the website, people cannot see you unless you are speaking. So motion was made by David Pearson. How do you vote?
Aye.
Motion was seconded by Michael Thomas. How do you vote?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Jim? You're muted.
All that to say no, nay.
No, okay, we have four ayes and one nay, and then the nay is by Jim Webb. Okay, that takes care of this agenda item. Future agenda items. Does anyone have an item that they'd like to put on the agenda for the next meeting? Jim?
Yeah, I'd like to see more information about fixing the pipe that supplies water to the community. It's currently laying on top of a field by the side of Highway One, and I think that is a huge risk for all of us. I mean, if I ran a hotel and a and a restaurant and all of a sudden the water cut off for some reason because some idiot ran off the highway and ran into our pipe, I, you know, I think the district has some liability, and and I think we should fix it, and I think we can.
Okay, we'll put that as a future agenda item. Okay. Okay, we also need the money to fix it. Okay, anybody else? No? Okay. It is four sixteen, and if no one has any objections, we can go ahead and adjourn. Does anybody have any objection to adjourning? Seeing none. Thank you. Our next meeting is May ninth. Do I hit stop recording, Pam? Or pause? Stop?
Stop recording first.
Okay.
And then you can just close the meeting.
Okay, there's a stop cloud recording. Do I I hit that, right?
Yes.